Alrighty. Good morning, everyone. I don't like these. They're so loud. Good morning, everyone. We'll call our meeting to go there to order. Oh my goodness, I'm glad we're all together. June tenth, um, let's start with the pledge. Keith, could you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, let's do roll call.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I am here.
Commissioner District Two, Pat Tarzwell.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trats.
I am here. Moving on to item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Do we have any correspondence to report?
We do. Bush Law Firm, P L L C, sent in a letter regarding the A T and T Fiber acquisition in Mason County, and Carrie Myers sent in an application for the lodging tax advisory committee.
That's it?
That's it. That's all today.
Alright, let's move on to item number five. This is the opportunity we give citizens, um, to speak to the three of us. Fifteen minute max, three minute total. No, fifteen, three minute max, fifteen minute.
Please.
Oh my goodness.
Dean's here, he'll use fifteen minutes.
Oh, Dean, we love you. Alright, let's start in our room here. Would anyone like to go first?
No.
State your name and where you're from, please.
Dean Jewett, lifelong Mason County member. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. Uh, probably gonna be quick, imagine that. Uh, I want to give a shout out to our, our, our environmental health team, uh, with Sonny back here and Randy. Uh, I just had the opportunity to sit. We're selling one of our trucks and doing the whole transfer stuff and the way that she was able to handle the new customers or the new buyers and, and the flow charts and everything like that. It's the transparency and the, uh, the culture that they've changed. Cause as we know, at one time, we've, you know, there was like five, six different, uh, health inspectors coming around. You never knew who you were gonna get and what they said and what somebody else said. So, uh, a shout out to Sonny. So, no, really, that's, I, I really appreciate it. Uh, and then we also were able to work on these pop-up vendors that were coming around that were unlicensed, unpermitted, no hand washing, no bathrooms, you know, no nothing. So I was able to track down where they were at. Other people were doing some reporting. And I, I believe that we've got some of those things shut down. I mean, it's not easy being in a restaurant or a food truck and having to deal with all the permitting and all the licensing and all the, and, and you just have somebody come in randomly out of the blue that just thinks they can set up on any sidewalk and beat the flow of pedestrian traffic, whatever else happens, and how unsafe it is. So, I appreciate that. Uh, so that kind of leads me into the collaboration between the city and the county. Uh, I have seen some increase in that and I appreciate the heck out of it. Uh, I would like to see a little bit more when we get into some of the environmental side of it with, you know, the hillsides. The, uh, and I'm gonna explain, we have vagrants and we have homeless, two completely different things. When people hear the word vagrant, it has, it has, it carries a negative connotation, illegal activity, criminal, uh, different things like that. When you have a homeless, that necessarily doesn't mean that person's a vagrant. They could be, but typically those individuals are using the resources that we have available and writ, and, and lifting themselves out of the quagmire and being a good productive member to the community and/or getting their family back where it needs to go. There's a complete difference between the, the two. People don't like to fund vagrants. They like to fund homeless. So everybody talks about homeless and that's where all the funding goes, and that's not where it's at. So I really would like to see the county and the city set up, uh, you know, some real, some real good guidelines and some real working together between law enforcement and code enforcement between that. There's hotspots where people go to. I think that we had, we need a proactive approach on some of these, and if you don't know where they're all at, I'll give you a field trip. Uh, so basically, that's, that's about all I got. I appreciate all you guys up here and, uh, and our, our new individual here as well. So I think Travis is a good guy. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
I forgot Keith, too.
Thanks, Dean. Do we have anyone else in the room that would like to say anything?
He still had fourteen minutes left.
Alright, let's go to the Zoom room. Is there anyone in the Zoom room that would like to say anything to the commission at this time? Alright, let's move on to item number six, adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move for adoption of today's agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes from May nineteenth and June second, twenty twenty-five briefing minutes. May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes and June second, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the May nineteenth and June second, twenty twenty-five briefing minutes, the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes, and June second, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Motion passes. Moving on to item number eight, approval of our action agenda. Commissioners will read through the action agenda. Um, if items can be removed for a special discussion or a vote. And let's start with Commissioner Netherland, if you could do eight point one through eight point three. Commissioner Tarzwell, eight point four through eight point eight, and I'll finish the rest.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, item number eight point one reads, approval of warrants and treasurer's electronic remittance. Claims clearing fund warrants number eight, one-one-two-eight-one-five through eight-one-one-one-three-zero-nine-one. The amount, one million, one hundred forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars, thirty-two cents. Direct deposit fund warrants number one-one-six-four-six-seven through one-one-six-eight-seven-five. The amount, nine hundred sixty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-three dollars and twelve cents. Salary clearing fund warrants number seven-zero-zero-eight-nine-zero-eight through seven-zero-zero-eight-nine-three-four. The amount, six hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred thirty-one dollars, ninety cents. Treasurer's electronic remittance is one million, nine hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. Item number eight point two, approval of a resolution appointing, appointing Brittany Pearson to serve as the Mason County Treasurer until the next general elective, uh, election effective July first, twenty twenty-five. And item number eight point three, approval of the Mason Matters contract to monitor the health status of the community in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars from January first, twenty twenty-five to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Item eight point four, approval of the resolution authorizing purchase of a minivan for the mobile outreach expansion program for the amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. Item eight point five, approval of four-year inter-local agreement with Kitsap County to continue providing residential household hazardous waste collection and disposal of Mason County and approval to sign the optional amendment to extend the agreement for an additional four years. Item eight point six, approval of the resolution for County Roads Project, C R P number two-zero-six-eight for the Co-Quallum Road Improvement Project from milepost six-point-six to milepost seven-point-eight and C R P number two-zero-six-nine for Bear Creek-to-Waddo Culvert Replacements. At milepost six-one, six-one-eight through seven-point-four-three and seven-point-nine-four. And approval for the county engineer to advise, set bid opening dates and times and award contracts and the approval for the county engineer and/or chair to sign all pertinent documents related to these projects. Item eight point seven, approval of the resolution declaring intent to establish the Island Lake, Lake Management District, L M D number one, and to set a public hearing on the formation of the proposed L M D on Tuesday, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at nine fifteen A M. And item eight point eight, approval of, to temporarily move Detective Sergeant Jeff Rhodes into the Chief Criminal Deputy position at range forty-seven, step eight, effective June first, twenty twenty-five, and approval of out-of-class pay for Chief Criminal Deputy Jason Dracula for the temporary, for temporarily serving as the undersheriff effective June first, twenty twenty-five.
Item eight point nine, approval to create, post, and fill one full-time employee F T E juvenile detention officer position. Sorry. Item eight point one zero, approval of the State Homeland Security Program fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-two. Grant contract E twenty-three dash zero-nine-eight amendment for an additional ten thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars. Item eight point eleven, approval to create, post, and fill a point-five F T E seasonal maintenance position within the facilities department. Item eight point one two, approval to appoint Arundel Stargard and Isaiah Johnston to the Planning Advisory Commission for terms expiring June tenth, twenty twenty-nine. Commissioners, having read through the action agenda, are there any items that you would like to have removed for special discussion or vote?
Madam Chair, it's been brought to my attention that we have a special circumstance, so, uh, I think it's, uh, prudent if we pull item number eight point two for a separate discussion and vote.
Great. Yeah. Anybody in the audience want anything's taken off the agenda for special discussion or vote? No, anyone in the Zoom room? Alright. Having read through the agenda, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the action agenda with the removal of eight point two for a separate vote.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the action agenda except for item eight point two for sep, for special discussion and vote. Any discussion?
Uh, comment. Item number eight point one-two, appointment of Arundel, uh, Stargard and Isaiah Johnston to the Planning Advisory Commission. Want to thank the citizens for stepping up as they did. We had some excellent applicants this time around, and I gotta tell you, it's, it seems to be getting better and better with these people that are coming forward. I just don't know where they've been all these years. But that's what it takes to keep everything moving correctly, is to have educated people that are uh, educated on the issues that are before them to step up and serve on some of these citizen advisory committees, cause it is needed. Uh, they come to us and, and we have great faith in the work that they do. Uh, it's hard for us to do all the work, so we have to spread it out amongst the citizens. So, thank you for stepping up.
Alright, um, yeah, absolutely. Alright, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, let's move to item eight point two. This is approval of the resolution appointing Brittany Pearson to serve as Mason County Treasurer until the next general election effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
I couldn't help but smile when I said, I was trying to make it seem so, uh, the commissioner informed us that there was some family here, so we wanted to take a moment uh, to, to recognize, um, what's actually happening here, but also to give you a chance, I think, to recognize your family, right?
Yeah, and, and I think the office. I think most of the office is here as well.
Yeah, I've got most of the office here. We've got a couple up there who are holding down the door, so they can be here. Uh, Lisa and Julia are at conference, so, and then this is my husband, Jason, so he's here to support me as well. Very exciting time for all of us.
Did I scare you at all?
Just a little.
Well, you gotta blame her, it was her idea.
Very excited, so.
Yeah, we're excited.
I appreciate it and the support.
No.
Here and moving forward.
Well, and as always, if you need anything, just reach down, come down the stairs.
Okay.
Go out for a coffee.
Yeah, of course. Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, Madam Chair, with that, I move we approve the resolution appointing Brittany Pearson to serve as Mason County Treasurer until the next general election effective May, or excuse me, July first, twenty twenty-five.
Madam Chair, a second?
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution appointing Brittany Pearson to serve as Mason County Treasurer and the next, until the next general election effective July first, twenty twenty-five.
Wait a minute, we still.
We haven't voted yet.
Yeah.
I'm gonna call for the vote.
Aye.
Motion passes. That's exciting. Thank you. And I want to thank Lisa for all of her years and dedication to the office and to Mason County. She's pretty darn awesome.
She's a really awesome mentor, too, so.
And, and she's got amazing staff. So you guys are all so much appreciated and, you know, you never worry about certain offices and yours, it's one of those.
We're pretty well-oiled machines. We work really well together, so.
Well, the seriousness of that particular position of all electeds, I have to say, that having somebody knowledgeable makes the biggest difference there, because if it was not somebody knowledgeable, it could be very dangerous considering they invest hundreds of millions of dollars. For us and every other, the school district supports, uh, it's important, just a little.
I agree with you one hundred percent. Yeah, thank you.
No, thank you. Alright.
Thank you. I'm very excited, very proud.
Yeah, we are too. Alright, let's move on to item number nine. Unless you would like to say anything more, or if your staff, does your staff wanna roast you? I mean, say anything good about you?
I don't think so.
Now, of the week, of the, of the first of July, it is hoped that you will come up before us and, and we can introduce you to the public and everything at that time as the, uh, the new treasurer.
Alright, so now let's move on to item number nine, um, other business. Do we have any department heads or other electeds that would like to address the commission?
Morning Commissioner Steve Dunkle, Mason County Auditor. Hey, I just want to remind you that we've got, uh, workshops coming up sponsored by the Auditor's Office Financial Services Department and conducted by our State Auditor's Office Internal Controls Expert, Debbie Pennick. And it's all about how to, uh, apply best practices, tools, and guides for fraud prevention and, and to strengthen our internal controls. And we've got two sessions, one from nine A M. to noon and one from one P M. to four P M. So I want to encourage all the department heads and anybody else who's interested to attend these free workshops. I think you'd get a lot of out of it. And, um, it's gonna be an important step to help strengthen, strengthen our fraud prevention culture, so hope to see everybody there.
Is that today?
Pretty much.
Yesterday, or you didn't, you didn't give a date?
I didn't get the date?
No.
Oh, June twenty-sixth. Thank you. And it will be up at Public Works. Thanks.
Thanks, please. Right, now you have no excuse. Do we have any other department heads or electeds that would like to address the, the commission? Travis? Don't say anything?
I don't.
We have anyone in the Zoom room that would like to address the commission? Alright, well, I do want to thank Travis for coming over and sitting in the chair for a bit. And appreciate the, the work that you do and the dedication that you have to Mason County.
Thank you.
Alright, it is time now. We can move on to item number ten. Um, public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider the resolution adopting the American, Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan for Public Right-of-Way, and you do not look like Mike. You're much cuter.
I don't know about that, but, yeah, Mike sends his apologies. Otherwise, he would gladly be here this morning. So, thank you, commissioners. Yes, we are asking for you to consider adopting the American Disabilities Act Transition Plan. And this is a plan that we essentially have in place already. We have policies and procedures. Um, we have a commitment to providing barrier-free access to folks in our community with disabilities. And what this does is kind of put a bow on what our existing approach is. And it identifies what our policies are, who our contact is for reporting or identifying barriers that should be removed. And, um, with a special emphasis and focus on our transportation network is what this plan is all about. And the reason we're bringing it before you this morning, commissioners, is because this is something that is an essential component and requirement for our continued use of federal highways funding. And, um, so what we did is we conducted an inventory of our facilities and identified whether or not there were any barriers to access, and there were not. Um, our inventory is very small, as you might imagine. If we were the city of Shelton, that would have been quite the process. So it's taking a look at our sidewalks and our pedestrian crossings, our ramps and all of those good things. And we have, um, most of our facilities up in Belfair, and we have two sidewalks. One on Old Belfair Highway and one on Clifton, and then one on Lakeland Drive in Allen as well. So those were all, um, evaluated and identified as not having any barriers. We also, last year, adopted our county road standards, and those spell out how to make sure that construction is made in a barrier-free um, manner as well for new development. And of course, that applies to the county as well if we were constructing those types of facilities. So that's, that is kind of in a small little nutshell. Um, there are, of course, a lot more details to the plan itself and, um, twenty-nine pages worth of, of details. And like any good plan, it's a work in process. So, um, it's something that is to be continued to evaluate and adapt and certainly expand on. So I know that our facilities team does the same thing. Someday, you know, that, that would be a component of the plan as well, is to, to roll in our public facilities and, and other, so. That's kind of the quick and dirty. And we're asking commission that you approve the resolution adopting the ADA Transition Plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Do we need to hold a public hearing, or is this?
This is, this is it. Yes, it was advertised and, and noticed, gosh, I think, back in, hmm, some time ago.
May twenty-second?
May twenty-second. Thank you.
And the twenty-ninth?
Yes, yes, yeah, posted up. Oh, and the other thing I did not say, but I would like to, um, give a big shout out to Ginger Canyon and to Colby Glazer and to Dave Smith, who were the primary folks that worked on this, and, um, they all did it. All brought different levels of expertise to the project and I'm very grateful for their work.
Anyone in the audience have any questions for staff? No? Anyone in the Zoom room have questions for staff? Alright, thank you.
You bet.
Alright, now this is the time that we set aside for, um, testimony. Does anyone wish to testify? Anyone in the Zoom room wish to testify? Alright, commissioners. Discussion or?
If you have closed public testimony, I'd be willing to make a motion.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, Madam Chair, I, uh, move to approve the resolution adopting the Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Transition Plan for Public Right-of-Way.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution for the Americans with Disabilities Act Transition Plan for Public Right-of-Way. Any discussion?
Thank you for the hard work.
I know. Yes, thank your team.
Yes.
They are amazing. Um, I know I say it all the time, but I really do mean it. We have amazing teams throughout Mason County, Mason County. We're all very lucky to have the people here that we have. Alright, I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. I love hearing like this. It was so easy. Alright, let's move on to item number eleven, boards, calendars, and reports. Um, Commissioner Netherland, if you could go first. Commissioner Tarzwell, then I'll follow.
Alright, now, a few of the meetings that, uh, we were at, uh, we had executive sessions, several of them, uh, we also had the Board of Health meeting that we're together. We had a special uh, meeting that we have called as well. Uh, a few things that I attended, candidate classes, Rotary Meeting, Law Enforcement, Firefighter Board, et cetera. Coming up though, uh, after this meeting, we have a utility, uh, water rate workshop. I'll be meeting, uh, and going to a Realtors Government Affairs meeting. There's a meeting going on with Judge Steele. I don't know if any of us have attended this. I know we get the invitation, so if one of you are attending, then let me know so I don't have to.
I usually go, I won't, I won't be making this one.
Damn. I thought I was getting off easy, okay. Then I will be attending that one.
Generally go to them.
Uh, Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority, the planning team, Chamber of Commerce Executive Board meeting, the Rotary Meeting, North Mason Chamber of Commerce has me as a speaker. Um, League Women Voters, uh, Mason Transit Authority will be together, North Mason Chamber of Commerce, Regime of Hood Canal Corning Council, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization, uh, and, uh, Tahuya has the Greater Peninsula Conservancy, uh, walk-through on the properties up there. And that brings us back, and we'll do it again.
Uh, we have the, we'll all be at the utility rate workshop. Uh, I'll be leaving a little bit early. I've gotta go pick up my wife at the airport. She's coming home. On my way to the airport, I'll be attending by phone the Thurston-Mason Behavioral Health Governing Board Meeting. And then if I get back in time, I'll make it to the MaceCon meeting today. Then, uh, tomorrow, we have a dare graduation at Pioneer School. I've got something else hidden up there. Can't tell what that is. It doesn't matter. And I have a, a lunch meeting tomorrow, uh, I T Steering Committee at, uh, one o'clock tomorrow. Then we have a Hood Canal Bridge Assessment Management Meeting. I think all three of us are invited. And then, uh, the Chamber after hours tomorrow night. And then we go into, uh, E D C meeting Thursday morning. And I have a sheriff's lunch up at Lakeland Village and a Clean Water District Advisory Committee meeting. Then North Mason Community Voice, Randy's gonna be speaking at that one, so I don't know whether I'll be able to make it up there or not. Uh, that's all I have for this week.
Alright, so of course, we do have the utility workshop coming up. That's popular. Yeah.
Except with the Health Department.
Right. Rude. Alright, so tonight, I was, I, I was asked and I'm so well, to speak at the Southside School Seventh Grade Promotion, um, to, and I don't know, it's, it's just kind of cool to know that you've got, th, these are our future leaders, so it's, it's, it's exciting. Then tomorrow, running out, like, Local Emergency Planning Committee. I'll also be heading up to, uh, the Pioneer Elementary for their dare program graduation. Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting, Kimber County's Caucus meeting, um, that's through WASAC. Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency on A, Aging, they, we have our Leadership Academy graduation. So these people go through a, it's like a nine-week course. And then they, they get to graduate and it's just, it's just kind of cool. Saturday, I'll be going to, it's called The Roast. Um, it's out in Centralia, it's put on by the Senate, uh, Republicans. Have our briefing next week, WASAC virtual, and then a meeting with H R. to go over our policy book. Do we have a Mason Transit meeting? I think we do, right? Mason Transit meeting. I'm meeting with Julie Tucson. She is one of the commissioners out at the P U D three, um, Area Agency on Aging Consortium meeting. Always get those words mixed up. Anyway, public, this is pretty exciting. We have a interview for a chief public defender. And so I'll be sitting in on that. Women's group meeting on Wednesday night, and then, don't forget, the nineteenth is a holiday. Don't come to work. And then, um, I'll be in Ocean Shores. We're taking a few weekends and scattering ashes for Ted's parents, so. Kind of solemn, but it's kind of cool to, just to see how. They mix with the water and the earth and it's just kind of cool, nerd talk, right? Alright, having read, oh, and then I also wanted to, to just say something real quick, I was driving by Tally this morning on my way to work and. There was a gentleman trying to light the logs on fire, and so. Uh, I would just ask that, uh, if see, if people see things like this, please bring it to somebody's attention, because. There's a lot of things going on and and see something, say something, so. Horns work great, and then if you whip around, they run away, just saying.
If you happen to have a fire extinguisher, not only does it work for that, it also takes away their breath, so they can't defend themselves, so remember that too. If you squirt them with, yes, it does, that's one of the best things you can have for your home defense, if you're worried about guns or anything, you carry a fire extinguisher in your homes and your rooms. Do you spray that at somebody they cannot breathe, so, uh.
And on that note.
I may, I may also be at the bridge assessment, uh, 'cause it's probably Hood Canal Corning Council, and I have a conflict on the sheriff's meeting, but if I can get past the conflict, I will be there also.
Alright.
Sheriff's breakfast.
Anything else? Anything for us?
Nope.
Good to go? Alright, and now we're at the end of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move with you, slight, light, light hint there, she didn't kick me to the table or nothing, Madam Chair, I move we adjourned, second.
Alright, a motion and a second, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.